Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Trumbull Board of Education, Tuesday, August 11th, 2020, 7:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, Mrs. Norah Self, Correspondent.
Since our last Board of Ed meeting, we have received 25 emails. Some have been answered or addressed by the Mrs. Tipper Nellie, our Chair, or by Dr. Bud. A majority concerned either the reopening plan or unanswered questions from the Zoom meeting. Claire DeBano, Susan Cartel, Katie Tawaski, Yama Yamaka, Karen Shabani, Meg May Lang, Amy Tuwa, Mary Hari, and Sarah Narawaski had many questions, which I just am going to summarize a few of them because there were many, many of them. When will full-time school start? What will three virtual days of learning look like? How many hours of instructions will elementary students actually get over the week? And how will reading intervention be addressed? Shannon Diaz, Pamela Smith, and Allison Scutumara wanted known that five days of school is where and what we should have forfeit. Anne Martino, Christina Watham, Shaboya Lindon, questioned why we have such large class sizes at this time. Patricia Kelly provided a transcript of her public comment. Max Gambus, who is working for his Eagle Scout Award, asked how he could work with us during this time while he works on his Eagle Scout. And Kelly Zaderoski, who is a teacher in Westport in one of the subcommittees, thanked and complimented our reopening committee for designing and making changes that were really great changes so quickly in comparison. She said it was really great as a person doing the other. And that's our communication for tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next is public comment. Our first speaker is John Mastriani.
Mr. Mastriani is coming in now.
Mr. Mastriani, may I speak? Am I good?
Yes.
You can hear me, John.
Yes, I'm doing. All right, I want to start by clarifying some very common misconception that I've heard the past month or so. It appears that teachers have been getting the blame for lack of rigor in the spring's online learning model. However, we were constantly told this whole entire time by administration to make lessons easier, forgive missing assignments, and reduce our expectations for students. So any lack of rigor is simply not our choice but an administrative direct. Trumbull students and teachers are slated to return to a very different type of public education this fall. This time of year is filled with anticipation and excitement, and those feelings are still there. However, during the pandemic, they're also joined by anxiety, stress, and in some cases, fear. I have no doubt that Trumbull teachers will do what we've always done and put our best foot forward, teach students at Trumbull at levels that exceed state expectations. Trumbull has never accepted a state average from teachers when it comes to academics. We continuously strive to do better than neighboring districts. It's been stated numerous times that the district's reopening plan is a flexible document that will change based on the needs of the district and state guidance. Therefore, we still have time to make this plan better than the state expects. As stated at the last Board of Education meeting, this district needs to remove the various safety loopholes that still exist within the plan. It's proven that utilizing masks and keeping a safe distance slows the spread of the virus. Therefore, we ask the plan be modified to make mask a requirement for all students by removing the various exemptions for medical needs. We also ask that six feet of social distance between students is adhered to regardless of the three-foot loophole requested by the state. The district also needs to permit teachers that childcare needs to work from home on the scheduled deep cleaning day during the hybrid model. This will provide a much-needed and necessary relief for teachers struggling to find and afford childcare for their own children. Although these recommendations exceed state guidelines and expectations, that is something Trumbull's always done. We're asking this board to help us do better than just the expected. Our students deserve to come back to school with the safest protocols possible, and as usual, we can do better than state guideline. I also want to make something else very clear. When it comes to the components of the reopening plan, like live streaming classes with students present, these were not discussed in the subcommittees for the reopening. This was added without input from teachers during this time. It is time the district realized that you changed our working conditions and begin to negotiate MOU with the association. This will ensure a smooth opening and put many of our concerns to rest. However, after four attempts to start these negotiations, we are still being met with resistance, and there's no need for it. Whenever the union and administration settle a disagreement, we usually state that we're all on the same team. And in the spirit of unity and the fact that we're all sick of Zoom meetings, I'm asking that this Board of Education start hosting meetings live again. Of course, follow all proper social distance guidelines. This will go a long way to show support for your teachers and students doing the same thing in their classrooms in three weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gabby Trop.
Good evening. My name is Gabby Trop, and I graduated from Trumbull High in 2016. I'm a proud Trumbullite, and I'm very grateful for the opportunities that this town and our school system have granted me. It is exactly for this reason that I feel it is essential to our town's future and the continued success of Trumbull students that we, as a town, take action in this historic moment to help TPS students understand and think critically about the world we're living in, the stories they may see on the news, and the posts they may come across on social media. It is imperative for the school system to do a sort of spiritual inventory, finding the instances and systems that allow for bias to be perpetuated, and taking a course of action to promote diversity, inclusion, and equity instead. Along with many others, I'm calling for a school-based committee of administrators, principals, teachers, parents, and students to evaluate Trumbull Public Schools on many criteria, most importantly including curriculum, professional development, and workforce and talent management. This committee would then develop a comprehensive plan to improve Trumbull Public Schools in line with the values that people at all levels of the school system holds in common. Southington, Connecticut recently underwent a similar process, and they have made admirable progress toward a more inclusive and equitable school system. I would like to see Trumbull follow in those footsteps. This type of committee is by no means a strange, new, or radical idea. Towns all over the state and nation are undergoing the self-evaluation process, and I would hate to see my town fall behind by not doing this important work. Within our town, this idea already has support from school administration, Board of Ed members, Town Council members, and First Lieutenant Vicki Tesoro. As one of the co-writers of the report presented to the superintendent a few weeks ago, it has become eminently clear to me that Trumbull can do better, and we must do better. Now is the time to join our peers across the state and across America in pursuit of equitable and inclusive education. I know that this committee, once formed, would help future THS alumni leave school ready to take the world by storm. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anthony Smith.
First of all, I want to say thank you to all of you educators and support staff. There are certainly a lot of very valid concerns going about around our return to school, and I recognize it's a huge burden that you are bearing right now to get everything ready for a new school year. Our family would like to express its concerns with the recommended reopening plan. We are frankly surprised that Trumbull is moving in the direction of hybrid education when the state of Connecticut's own metrics say we ought to be returning to in-person learning due to low-virus activity around here. With all due respect to the folks who presented the plan last week, the specific reasons for going with hybrid education over the other options weren't made clear, and so it's hard for us as parents to have any other reference other than our experience in the spring. That experience showed that distance learning is really not a great mode for elementary school children to learn the things they need to learn. We understand that distance learning may very well be an appropriate option for our Trumbull High School students, but children of elementary age don't seem to be at a point in their development where they have the attention span or self-motivation to log into a system and complete assignments. Parents will aid their children in all subjects, but we are admittedly not very skilled at teaching. So our concern is that for any subject students struggle with, their frustrations will be amplified as it falls to the parents to force them to re-review the content until they understand it. We also have the secondary concern of disruption of the parents' work schedules. To-income households struggle mightily, declare time in the middle of the day for one of the parents to do schoolwork with the kids, and for essential workers who can't change their work schedules around, taking the time to support their child's education may also come with financial distress. So bottom line, we are concerned that applying distance learning too liberally may do damage to this group of kids. We ask that the town follow the metrics provided by the state, and I understand that we're already headed in the direction of doing hybrid education, but we would like some indication of when we will utilize the state's metrics and what those metrics need to look like before we return to full-person education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next item is superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Tipper Nellie. Although we won't be signing him officially until Thursday this week, I am pleased to announce that after thorough set of interviews as well as strong vetting process, I am pleased again to announce that Mr. Paul Hendrickson has been selected as our new business administrator, replacing Yidorm Al Cameran, who on many occasions has said he's done a great, great job assuming that temporary position. Mr. Hendrickson's arrival date will be worked out on Thursday with human resource specialist Mary Connecty. You should know that Paul is a very experienced and possesses a strong skill set. He's currently is the business manager in Plymouth, Terryville, Connecticut Public Schools, and previously held the same position for eight years, eight years with the Ridgefield Public Schools. Paul received his ES in Engineering from the United States Naval Academy and his MBA from Harvard University. Paul had strong support from the committee, myself, and his current supervisor, ironically happy to be Dr. Martin Semmel, our new superintendent of schools. And Paul, I think Michelle is joining us on Zoom. And Paul, can you hear me?
Paul Hendrickson, are you on?
I think Bill's looking for him in the list.
Paul is being promoted to as a panelist to speak.
Okay. Is she trying to...
All right.
Well, how are you? How's it going?
Oh, so far, so good.
Okay, I know you want to say a few words. Three of our board members are here live. We have three of them on Zoom at their home in Sawyer's.
I'd like to thank the interviewing committee, the four people with which I spoke with last week. If they are all representative of the Trumbull school system, speaks very highly of the school system, I look forward to joining the team and continuing my association with Superintendent Semmel.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Naval graduate from Annapolis.
Congratulations. We welcome you, Paul. Look forward to meeting you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Take care.
Thank you.
Obviously, you'll be on Thursday. Secondly, I'd like to point out that our welcome back open meeting for the administrative staff will be next week, when again, we will focus on tweaking our reopening plan. As Ken mentioned, as some of the speakers mentioned, that plan will be constantly monitored and tweaked to make sure that all the kinks are out and that we are proceeding smoothly forward. We want to definitely make sure in the next three weeks that we're ready to open schools in September. As you know, the pre-K to 12, first day of school is September 8th. Okay, our transition grades, like pre-K, K, sixth, and ninth are scheduled prior to that, and notices will be going home. Our second reopening forum is held on Friday, and we're very appreciative of all the positive comments that we have received. Over 500 members again of our educational community tuned in, and later in this meeting, we will elaborate on some key points that evolved from the meeting. Certainly, we can't answer all the questions. We can have almost seriously about 700 questions, but trying to answer the basic questions to disseminate the information as quickly as possible. And if something is just gnawing at you, you can always call any of the people with their phone numbers that were listed on our website. Later this week, I think it's August 13th, I will be participating in a work finance Zoom meeting on costs we submitted to the state of Connecticut, the possible reimbursement due to the expenditure of funds on the COVID-19 pandemic. I met with the superintendent and the governor 10 days ago, and our total cost in our plan is about $5.3 million. Okay, what we did, we surveyed all our vision heads and someone around committees, and that's what we came up with. The largest expenditure, as you can imagine, would be in the PPS area and the transportation area. There are some staffing increases, particularly again from the facilities, because we want to sanitize daily several times, multiple times during the day, and we've got a good handle on that. John Moreland, David Irwin have done a really nice job in setting that up. Also, this week, on the 13th, it's my understanding that they will discuss on my request to allow us to utilize 1920 unfunded monies balanced for a new school year. That could be for legacy accounts, particularly at the elementary level. If necessary, depending on where the money is coming from to pay for in every school district, not just Trumbull, we have to use some of that money for that related to COVID. We have resources, school districts only have resources, local, financial aid, state aid, and federal government. So we're waiting now to get some reports, particularly with the CARES Act and the federal government. In the last first round, we only received about $158,000, but two schools we had to share that with, rightly so, with St. Joe's and with Christianity Area. As you also are aware, particularly the board, I don't know if the public is cognizant of this, but the Trumbull High School was entered into at 2:00 AM by three young adults about two and a half weeks ago. Our security system responded well. The police were there at 2:00 AM. I was there, and Scott Secor, our head security chief, was there almost immediately. We were able to identify two of the three individuals via video surveillance. Unfortunately, legally and technically, the culprits could not be charged, felt, okay, for breaking and entering since they came in through an open door that's been open for years. For safety reasons, inside, so no one can get trapped in the hydraulic system, the venting system. But we're going to remedy that.
Under roof, right?
Under roof, I'm sorry. Under roof. Yeah, they answered to me. All our security measures kicked in, but when we got there, and I'll tell you what, I got the call, I think it's 5:02 in the morning, and I'm only seven minutes away. I was there by 10:00 after, and the police were already there with Scott, and they were gone. We checked, because we had, we could get all the monitors on the screen, and they weren't in the building at that time. Either that, or they were hiding very well. But facial recognition was made with the main individual, and then we were able to follow through on that. Just a couple of other things. Mrs. Tipper, I and I were talking with, also with Tim before the meeting started, and I with Jonathan and one of the principals, and looking, you know, ahead to September 8th. The only two areas that I'm concerned about, and we all are, okay, are staffing. Staffing in the regard of having enough staff to teach our students, because a large number in every school district, okay, have opted out for the legal binding reasons that the government has put down. Age requirements, miscellaneous problems at home regarding to parents, the children who are sick. There's about eight or nine different things. So we're going over that. In fact, we'll get to that later. He is working with Mary Connecty and myself on that, and we'll work with teachers to see the exact number of needs. The other is, we're having a difficult time with finding a PPS director. As you know, we have problems with the interim, with the full-time director of finance. We had some quality candidates, but we only had three the first time out. So we're still seeking, we're calling now individual districts to see if the PPS director wants to take a job here, to interview for a job. Although, I'll tell you, I should say this, I know she's quivering if she's on the line, Kim Hatkin, working with Barbara Bead, has done a magnificent job in trying to restructure our program, but also work meet the needs of the students with special needs. And she's very cooperative in that, but we still, she's only interim. You know, with that, she has other things, but she can only make so much money per the TRP Teacher Retirement Board. So those are two of the concerns. The last concern I want to say is, and I'm shocked by this, is today I got a text from the board chair saying, "You're not going to believe this, but the governor is now promoting live learning throughout the state, if it's safe." Well, you know, we started out with remote learning everybody last year for four or five months. There was emergencies, so we had to do it. Then it was three models, live, virtual, or hybrid. And now he came out, most of the districts are going hybrid. In fact, I think in Fairfield County, 70% of the districts are going similar to us, 75% of the hybrid plan. But today, he said, "If you can do it safely, I'd like to see all the kids in live." Well, we would too. We could do the peers. Nothing can substitute for dialogue, exchanges between the teacher and the students. Okay? But it's very difficult, and this is really answering one of the questions. We can't go live because we don't have the space, whether it's six feet or three feet. The cost is astronomical. Remember I mentioned 5.3? It'd be much more. Okay? So we're looking at that, and we'll have to wait and see if it comes out. But what we said, the superintendent can still make that decision. I think it's such a monumental decision that would come back to the board. That Jonathan and I talked, we may have to set up the committee if he really promotes. So we'll see with regard to that. I know it was a little long tonight, but I thought this is information that was important, and we'll elaborate a little bit more on the hybrid. Not too much because of what we've done to set. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the Board of Chair report. I'd just like everyone to know that I've been in contact with Dr. Semmel, and he is being apprised and involved with the hirings as they present. He is in contact with Mr. Isagna on various items that will need his approval prior to him coming on full-time. In this effort, he is making an effort, we speak to him at least bi-weekly, so we will continue to do so until he starts on September 14th. Okay, thank you.
I just have one thing.
Yes.
I probably shouldn't mention this. It's just ironic that Paul Hendrickson is going to be the finance director. Okay? Because he worked for Marty Semmel, he didn't just get the job. He got the job because he was two good candidates. He got the job because he was the best candidate for the position, had the skill set and the experience that Trumbull needs to move forward, hit the ground running.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our reports and action items. Our first is the approval of the wage adjustments. Attorney Dubis.
Last month, or last meeting, rather, I was here to present to you some requested equity adjustments from the executive assistant to the superintendent and the secretary to the superintendent. They had provided some information relative to their pay versus other comparable positions in the Board of Education, plus some comparable data regarding similar positions surrounding school districts. We were, I was prepared to recommend those equity adjustments to you, and I believe you were prepared to act on that. Unfortunately, just before coming into the meeting, I saw some information that seemed to contradict the information that was provided and that I communicated to you. So out of an abundance of caution, to use the football maniac, or I call it the football, and asked, passed on that issue so I could get an opportunity to make sure the information was accurate and correct and what I was looking at, which seemed to indicate something else, whether that was correct or not. Anyway, the long story short is, what I was looking at did not change the situation in terms of the comparables that were available. And in fact, I believe that the information supports the equity adjustment staff were discussed and that I believe we were prepared to act on. So at this point in time, I would request that you provide an adjustment for the executive assistant to the superintendent, ultimately to $3,793, to again bring her in line relative to comparable positions, and that's going to happen half retroactive to July 1, 2021, and half effective January 1 of 2021. And similarly, the secretary to the superintendent will receive an equity, it is recommended, an equity adjustment to $34.85. Half of that will be retro to July 1, 2020, and half of that, the other half will go into effect in January 1st of 2021. Looking at the data, the comparability, the other positions of the district, and the relative duties and responsibilities, I believe those adjustments are fair and appropriate, and we recommend that you review.
All right, I'm going to need a motion to do that. Ken, do you want to make a motion?
So I accept, I can make a motion to accept the wage adjustments as provided by Attorney Dubis.
For the executive assistant and the secretary to the superintendent.
Scott Carroll second that.
And Scott Carroll second that. Okay. All right, anybody have a question on this? Any questions? Ordinators, no? Okay, I'll call for a vote. Tim Gallow?
I'm in favor.
Okay, Marie Petiti?
In favor.
Scott Carroll?
Yes, in favor.
Jackie Norso? Jackie Norso?
You're muted, Jack.
Yes, in favor.
Thank you. Mike Ward?
You're muted, Mike.
Mike, you're muted. Who sent Tipper Nellie in favor?
Yes, in favor.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, it's unanimous.
I think it's lying through it. I just take it off? Okay.
Okay, our next item is personnel. Mr. Isagna.
Thank you, Mrs. Tipper Nellie. There are two action items tonight. Let me begin with the personnel on retirees. Deb Semenza, she is our district, one of our district elementary reading specialists. Lived with her at halftime. She's been with us since August 2005, and she retired in August. She really had a way about her. She had an expansive skill set. She always motivated her students that both moved here to Ashmore School. She would be her students at both Woodhill and Ashmore School, she will be sorely missed, and we wish her and her family the very, very best. And you can take action on that, accepting it, and then I'll give you the three-year ask.
Okay, so I would, I would make a motion to accept the retirement of Deborah Semenza, who was the district elementary reading specialist, from August two thousand and five, if her retirement would be effective August fourth, twenty twenty-one.
I need a second.
I'll second that. Jackie Norso.
Norso seconds. Okay, all in favor? I will read, I will go through the list, and Mr. Gallow?
I'm in favor.
Marie Petiti? Scott Carroll?
Yes, in favor.
Okay, Jackie Norso?
In favor.
Mike Ward?
Yes, in favor.
And Lieutenant Tim Finelli in favor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, I went over the retirement of Mary Ellen Bowden, who's from Jane Ryan School. This was difficult for me to do because Mary Ellen has experienced several problems that the district is well aware of, the community, and she is just a phenomenal educator, who retirement certainly reflects a significant loss to the district. In nine years, Mary Ellen has proven herself to be a superb principal, making students, staff, and parents of Jane Ryan always her number one priority. I remember hiring her from Schaffler, where she was principal of Schaffler Academy, and Will Cox Elementary School, and my counterpart at that time in Schaffler was, I mean, Cornish, Dr. Cornish, she went talking for a couple of weeks, because I, in essence, stole one of her best people. There's no question in my mind, and in Mary Ellen's mind, she's considered the prototype principal, combined with the Jane Ryan education community, to bring the school to new level. We wish her, the family, the son, her husband, Tim, the very, very best. Stay safe.
And I also would like to say, I worked with Mary Ellen as the TAA co-president, and it was a pleasure to work with her, and I am happy that she is retiring, and I wish her all the blessings and all the best that she could have, enjoy your retirement, Mary Ellen. Jackie, I would think you'd want to say something.
Yes, I would, also as co-president, but more than just being another principal, we were colleagues together. Mary Ellen always listened and was able to come out with the right answer for people to help them come to consensus. She was just a lovely person, and she had some great personal things, she loved sports, she brought some great spirit ideas to Jane Ryan, and it was just a pleasure working with her, so we will miss her, but wish her well.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to need a motion, Mr. Gallow.
So, I would make a motion to accept the retirement of Mary Ellen Bowden, principal of Jane Ryan Elementary School, since July two thousand and eleven, retiring effective December fourth, twenty twenty.
I need a second.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mrs. Petiti, seconds. Okay, I'm going to go through the list, Mr. Gallow?
I'm in favor.
Okay, Marie Petiti? Scott Carroll?
Yes, in favor.
Jackie Norso?
Yes, in favor.
Mike Ward?
Yes, in favor.
And Lieutenant Tim Finelli, yes, in favor, thank you. Okay, good luck, Mary Ellen, we wish you best. Okay, next is our approval of the minutes, I need a motion to approve the minutes of regular meeting.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty.
I need a second.
I can second that motion.
Mr. Gallow will second. Okay, any questions or revisions that people have to look at, that they would like made?
I just wanted to note, I had sent a note to Elaine to please add the fact that Cristiano addressed the board after Ralph announced his appointment as a house principal, and I think Elaine took care of that.
Okay, as long as she sent a note, and thank you for doing that, is there any other amendment? No? Okay, all in favor? Mr. Gallow?
I'm in favor.
Marie Petiti? Lieutenant Tim Finelli, yes, in favor, Scott Carroll?
Yes, in favor.
Jackie Norso?
Yes, in favor.
Mike Ward?
Yes, in favor.
Thank you. Okay, next, we go to Mr. Isagna, the school reopening plan.
Thank you. Tonight, Jonathan, Christine Heffley, myself, we're going to focus on the hybrid plan that we had our second instruction forum on last Friday, before five hundred people are listening. We did choose the hybrid plan, it evolved from the committee, a lot of time, energy, and effort went into it, looking at various options, whether it's live, or it's remote learning, or the hybrid plan, as I mentioned previously, with superintendent support, most of the districts in Fairfield County are also in similar hybrid models, okay? I, I do think it's important to say publicly again, as we've conveyed on many, many occasions, Connecticut school districts faced an almost impossible task to address every aspect, any respect, such as the governor and the commissioner of law, because we had to put together the government commissioners protocols, federal mandates, revised learning approaches, school move conversions, health and wellness requirements, in particular, transportation issues, food service, okay, procedures, technology combinations, and of course, special education. Close, okay, I'm sorry. It's just a myriad, I think I used on the forum, that it's like you have a huge kitchen table, and you have a jigsaw puzzle, and it's a family one, and you come down to the last five or six or seven pieces of the puzzle, and they're not there, they're not in the box, okay? So, now, you've got to backtrack, you've got to look, you've got to, you know, drill down, find out what's going on, that's what this reminded me, I was with the Fairfield County Superintendent and the Governor last, about ten days ago, and I mentioned that, because things change so rapidly. Nothing, proof in the pudding is today, when he's, the governor is now leading toward one-to-one, live learning, and we applaud that, that's the way it should be, but to implement that in districts, particularly one with seven thousand students, or twenty-two hundred high school, okay, seven fifty to nine hundred middle school, it's extremely difficult, it's almost impossible. Jonathan and I talked about it, once you joined in, well, you've got to need instructional hours of nine hundred a year, you have to have the space requirements of minimum now three feet, they wear masks, there's a myriad, my other favorite phrase is a plethora of different components to putting forward any plan. That's why I said, not everyone's going to like it, but we had some exceptional people to vote many hours into it, and we know it's not going to be the choice of everybody, but we assemble the learning package that we believe will meet the basic needs of our students and staff, we certainly ask the education community for support and cooperation. If you want to say one final thing on that, I want to reiterate, because it's important, that this plan, the hybrid, can change tomorrow, with a protocol needing coming from the government, Fed in Washington, Hartford, the commissioner, everybody has their input into it. The example is, the government, we have wasted, okay, in our plan, the governor, the commissioner said, staff should be in our waste, now that can change, and it does, we'll adapt to it. But this is an evolving plan that we're going to have to adapt to as we go along. We really appreciate everybody's involvement, cooperation, and really patience, okay?
Mr. Isagna, the question that people were asking that we had during those forums, all those questions, are we going to give some kind of responses?
Yes, we will give some kind of responses, but that's I mentioned superintendent's report, I hope you can appreciate, you can't answer everyone, okay? Some are, you're going to see after it happens. I only threw in, someone said to me, "Well, you answered something specific about the mask breaks when you said, 'Everybody get a couple of gloves,' and that was a mask break," okay? I would say, we'd weave that in, but you can't answer everyone, okay? We're trying, Jackie mentioned, Mrs. Norso mentioned, Jonathan's responding, he's doing fantastic responses, okay? Christine Heffley too, I responded to some, okay? But you can't respond to everybody, and what we try to do is steer the questionnaire, the question, into the appropriate category. A health issue, that would be the health department, okay? And Min Steimer, Lucy is phenomenal responding to us, if it's a facilities issue, building principal, Ann, John, or David could do that, if it's technology, we just got, Michelle works in technology, how many last Chromebooks have we received?
We just got in fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred Chromebooks were purchased out of the money that I said, five point three million, all woke up, so it's, it's a, it's nonstop process, I mean.
Can I ask you a question?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I just, I think one of the things that I've, that I've been hearing is that I think we had committed to doing some kind of an FAQ document to like summarize and categorize all those questions and get them out. I think it's, I think it's a lot of people are just looking for that single place to go get some of their answers, and if we could get them together, is that important?
The process of doing that, it'll probably be more minimized than everybody would want, and then when we do it, we will put it on the website, we'll try to pick out the most important, questions that really impact, okay? For example, we had a question today about, "Talk to us about the bus monitors," that will be on, something like that, that really has a significant impact. Johnny?
I was just going to add something for the public, especially for what Ralph mentioned before, the addition to the grant funding under the CARES Act, so the actual amount that Trumbull Public Schools received, and we have applied for at this point, is one-hundred twenty-seven thousand, three hundred thirty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents, approximately thirty-five thousand other dollars were used for St. Joseph's High School, Christian Heritage, St. Catherine of Seattle, and St. Teresa, and that's per federal guidelines, there have been increased allocations to the non-public schools this time. So, to inform the board and the public, we submitted the grant in line with the state's requirements, and it was totally devoted to increased PPE and facilities needs for the schools, so that money we expect to be received, and will be turned over right to that department.
Jonathan, that was in phase one, that was the one fifty-eight thousand, okay? We're hoping for phase two, phase two has been distributed to the states, but not allocated yet to local districts, we're waiting to see what that comes in, in three groups, Jonathan mentioned that we should.
Ralph, could I ask a question?
Of course.
Yeah, today you sent out, and I looked at, you know, the, how we sent in ours, so we were one at a hundred percent, I didn't see any other district that had sent their papers in yet, we were the only one.
And the reason, I would assume, the reason is, because we were one of the last to send it, if not the last, and I talked to a chief, who's in charge of this up at the State Department, he gave us an extension because we had a personal issue down here, and you know that, that was Al Camara, okay? He had to leave for a family member down in Tennessee, and so Penguin D.C. stepped in for him, and when I talked to the chief, we handed in the first one, okay? Al did that, they got it, but that was prior to July fourteenth.
Right.
Once the governor came out and said, "Look, you could pick one of the three plans," all the districts had to hand one in like by the fifteenth, seventeenth. Well, we didn't, because Al wasn't here, and we were trying to get it together, we did get it together, and when I called the chief, he said, "Don't worry about it, just get it to me by Tuesday or Wednesday," we got it in, I think last night.
Right.
So, that's probably why, Jack.
Okay, I just was wondering, that's all, thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes.
Attorney Chairman, can I say a few words here?
Certainly.
Just a quickie, I know you've worked very hard, the whole committee has, I have some concerns about the health and safety of all those pupils, particularly at elementary level, and I've talked to the superintendent about, is it possible that we could add to the nursing staff, some type of support and help, that another nurse or a health aide could be available, because we're talking two or three hundred students, little children, I should say, that are coming back to school. I know we're attempting, and the community should be aware of this, to turn our public schools into mini hospitals, with all kinds of regulations and things to do, plus wearing a mask all the day, all time, almost twelve hours, or maybe ten or eight, twelve, I was concerned that we should have some more help in the health department.
And you're quite well taken, Mike, in fact, Jonathan and I were talking about that, he has another thing.
Yeah, the other thing was, before I get to Josh, is it possible that we could take a hard look at the elementary level and consider the first four days, it's half-days for the elementary level, not so much the middle or high school, because we, the first time these little children, kindergarten, first, second, and third grade, as well as the fourth and fifth grade, get the experience of four good days, or at least two good days at both the first two days and the last two days, of how they're coping with the wearing of a mask. If you think about a student who has to get on a bus at eight o'clock in the morning, and then spend six hours in a school setting, and then go home on a bus, he won't be getting home till four o'clock maybe in the afternoon, that's twelve hours of wearing a mask. I'd just take another hard look at, can it be done, at least at elementary level, with just the half-days, the first week of school?
Yeah, Mike, you mentioned this to me, I think yesterday or the day before, since then, we're looking into that, okay? We're going to want to bounce it off the committee, but it's a balanced suggestion that may come to fruition, and I want to reference it, this is one of the tweaks that I keep telling the public and board about, that have to be made on anybody's, any local district's plan, it's a tweak, okay? It's not massive, and we want to get that out in time. Good point, Mike.
Yeah, the other thing, just before Josh speaks, is the, in the elementary level, music and art will be taught at the, in the classroom, and he added the, is that department, but isn't there gymnasiums available for gym outside the classroom, for any reason why we're not giving them that opportunity to move a little bit more, is that something that we've considered, or just want to cross it off?
Well, yeah, Jonathan's group has, and he'll answer that, but some districts are putting in some gym activities under tents, but needless to say, with the storm, all that money went down, not trying to, down the trench.
Yeah, the hard look, I'm sorry, do, with all so many, I love to look at the circulation of the air in the elementary level, well, all schools, I guess, are we doing anything upgraded, are we meeting the standards of OSHA, particularly on those hot days we've had this past week in September, they do get pretty hot there, and kids, we can't use fans, are we getting some kind of regulation for all our costumes for air circulation?
Mike, Jonathan?
There's only a few questions, I know it's a hard, we have more time to look at this, but.
Doctor Buddy's going to answer your questions, I think he has some information.
Army? Okay, I know that, yeah, thank you, I'm sorry for my, we have so many.
They're excellent points.
There's a slight audio problem in the room, we're in, so I can't hear quite every word, but.
I'm sorry.
Last question was about ventilation, and I know Mr. Erwin.
Yeah, the circulation of the air.
That circulation of the air, and Mr. Erwin and Mr. Cappello were developing something on that as a response. Going backward, the second piece about physical education, yes, we anticipate that there will be opportunities to be outside, certainly for the foreseeable weeks that we're here, we anticipate that there might be some use in the gymnasium. There are some issues about what the state has given us as guidelines for physical education, and we can't violate those guidelines, but we have some idea that those guidelines might be modified or relaxed. I think you bring up an excellent point about the necessary movement of young children. And back to the prior issue about the health aids, this is of particular importance, and I'm glad you raised this point, because each building has to have an isolation room if a person in the building shows any signs or symptoms of COVID-19, and it's not feasible to think that the school nurse will And it's not feasible to think that the school nurse will supervise the isolation room, because the school nurse also has to deal with all the nursing needs. So Lynn Steinberg, the town director of nursing, has been in contact with us about this. We have some health aides as a role in the paraprofessional bargaining unit, and we intend to open up some conversations with that group about perhaps expanded health aid responsibilities. And I would expect we'd have an update on that certainly by the next meeting, because we need more than just the school nurse in place in each building.
Yeah, definitely.
I have to say, I have to say something too, Mrs. Doctor Bud. If it's, I don't know what the guidelines are from the state on physical education, but if we're gonna be back in school, they want some type of normalcy, that is the PE teacher's classroom is the gym. So they should go in there, and the gyms are large enough where one class can fit in there with enough space between them, where they can do different activities. And I'm sure our PE staff can think of what activities they can do, and that would be a great idea. Either inside, I know for the fall, you can go outside and do different things, because exercise gives you endorphins, and endorphins make you happy. So you want them to be doing things like that, so that they get that movement. They can't be sitting all the time, it's a good thing to have PE in its true form. So I would, I would look into that and see what the state says, and I would say to them, you know, if we could send the kids out, or in a gym class, where the, I'm sure our gym teachers are very creative and can think about what they can do, I'm sure that'll be fine.
I probably should have mentioned this in my report, but we're talking about athletics now. We talked about changes, well, I don't know if, and give everybody a heads up, football, major conferences are now canceling their football programs. Big Ten just did it today. But locally, the CIAC with Glenn being its chairperson, did a great job putting out a pamphlet that sports when will start, and football was scheduled to start in September or early October. Well, now, he is saying that football may be, no, not till tomorrow, may be pushed forward to the spring. Other fall sports might do the same, and they're media, it's eleven or two o'clock tomorrow on that very issue, whether it's swimming or tennis, I can't remember. But that's gonna have a significant impact. If football is pushed to the spring, and the other sports follow soon, but I, you know, my best guess is it's gonna, something's gonna have to be done, adjusted, with the CIAC, they did dynamite plan. Mike King's been involved in it, and he's really tenacious and dedicated to that. But I talked, I talked to him before we came out there, and we're waiting to see tomorrow what specifically is gonna happen, because it's gonna have an impact on all school districts.
Well, my question is this, I know that they're playing sports right now. There are younger students, ten and eleven years old, that are playing baseball in different leagues and things right now, so I don't know what the difference is, but they have to remember, if they're going to stop the football, then they have to stop all sports.
Well, the difference, as I said, is that if the governor mandates it, or the commissioner mandates it, that's the big difference.
And I feel bad for the people, the seniors at the high school. People get scholarships when they leave the high school on different sports, so, and then if some play football and some play baseball, and now they're in the spring, what are they gonna play? And then you're, you get involved with other activities that come up in the spring, and different, you go to different, what do you call those, camp conferences, the camps that kids go to, yes, there's all those different things, and I don't know what everybody's thinking about all that.
I think right now, we have a few state-powered groups, the SEC where Alabama is and stuff, and another that are gonna, right now, going to head into school.
There's a lot to consider. Who have a question?
I, I did.
No, I just, yeah, go ahead, Tim, I'll be next.
Okay, thank you, Jack. So my, my question or comment was for you, Mr. Asakam. So you've mentioned before that you have been meeting with twelve other superintendents in a group, and talked a little bit about the seventy-five percent doing similar to us. I think, you know, as a board, we know a little bit about that, but I think the public would probably love to hear a little bit more about that, and how similar we are. I, I know in my district of Walton, where I currently work, I know that we have a very similar program, a hybrid program, that we are currently moving forward, and we're all kind of in the same boat. So the fact that you are working with twelve other superintendents in a group, I think that's important for the public to hear a little bit more about that.
And we will disseminate that. Right now, we're trying to do a couple of things in sharing of information. Tomorrow, hopefully I will complete in the earliest I've ever done, okay, by welcome back the staff-school letter, okay? And just to update them, where we are, big change, et cetera, have more information from the CIAC or whatever, get that up. Then I want to have e-blast, although we sent two to the staff on parent community already, another e-blast updating them on the information, because as you know, we have changes every day. So we are gonna try and do that, and then we want to answer some questions still on the website. So we're multitasking as best we can, but we're trying our best.
But you're, we are definitely in the majority of what the twelve district has, you're talking about.
There may be slight differences, but hybrid, yes. Thank you.
Lucinda, I just wanted to go back to sports. Last night, the Big Ten in colleges did away with fall sports. So I'm sure the CIAC looked at that, you know, if the ten big universities who, football is their life, suspended it, I'm sure they're looking at that and making their decision.
There's no question, Jackie. In fact, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, University of Connecticut, UConn, was the first large Division One college to cancel its football season, okay? And I'm not saying this disparagingly, but UConn right now, hopefully will be, is not in the same category as Ohio State, like that, Notre University, Notre Dame, et cetera. When you see the Big Ten do something like that, ACC do something like that, you know, there's gotta be some tripping factors that they know, we don't know yet.
See, here's my interim with this. If the governor is saying that he's leaning towards full, right, full reopening, and then they're leaning towards not playing the extracurricular piece, it's kind of contradicting. You know, you say one thing on one hand and one on the other, so I'm really not understanding the.
Well, full, Lucinda, full just means we'll be in school five days a week. It doesn't mean that we're gonna get rid of masks, or six feet, or play sports. It just means that kids will come to school five days of the week. Full does not mean we're going back to the normal. Full just means that the kids will come to school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. It doesn't mean that we're getting rid of any of the other CDC things, or what the governor has said. It's only, where will the bodies be? You know, so I think some people think that full means.
Ralph, can I ask another question too?
Of course, Rob.
Yes, you can, Mr. Care.
Thank you. I, I'm curious, again, in your conversations with other superintendents, if, if any of them are doing something different than us, and in particular, what districts have you been following that might be opening full distance learning for a couple of weeks, and then going into the hybrid to essentially give us time to, A, polish our distance learning program, which I think people are clamoring for, as well as, because it's something we're gonna have to do well, we're gonna end up in that mode at some point, and in fact, it's the only mode that is part of all three models. So if we start with that for a couple of weeks, and get it, you know, get it humming, and during that time, we have more time to prepare and cover, you know, educate people about the protocols, so that we can safely open the buildings to people. Is that, was that a consideration of the committee's?
Yeah, not of the twelve, but individually, I know three or four superintendents wrote, and I was one of them, to the governor and the commissioner, that let's, let transitionalize into the phase, into the models. Hypothetically, we start school on, in September, and go to Thanksgiving with, let's say we're both. Then Thanksgiving to January first, you go to the hybrid. And if the numbers are good and things are going, you know, smoothly, and each district's got a handle on it, then you go to one-on-one block. They didn't respond to that, okay? But that's one of the things that we did, where the half-days that Mike mentioned, can evolve. I think, Lucinda, do you have that sheet I gave you here? The one that you showed me on the, on the.
I, I think it's, I just want to add, I think it's a misconception that people have that we're essentially picking a plan, and that's what we're going with. The reality is, we need to be prepared to do all three of these.
Right.
At any particular time, based on the, based on either the, the health directives from the state, or the demands of our own community. And so, we might as well get good at all three, but let's do them in a logical order. That's, that's my thinking.
No, you're right on, Lucinda and I were looking at this, let me see if I can kick this up. Hartford is going full in person, Rocky Hill's going full in person, Summers is going full in person, Windsor Locks, let me see Fairfield County, we have it here. Bridgeport is full in person, CES is full in, Greenwich is full in, K-8, but not the high school. Ridgefield Elementary and Middle, but not the high school, is full. The other ones are hybrid in Fairfield County, and I'm sure this may have changed already, I can go down the list, Fairfield Hybrid across the board, Monroe Hybrid across the board, Buchanan Hybrid across the board, Norwalk Hybrid at the middle and high school, Ridgefield Hybrid at the high school, Stanford Hybrid across the board, Trumbull Hybrid across the board, and Wilton Hybrid across the board. That gives you a flavor.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you, Jackie.
Doctor Bud?
I don't have anything to add at this point.
Nothing to add, okay. Does anyone else have anything to add? No?
No.
We will move on to student enrollment updates, Doctor Bud.
Thank you. So there's a presentation that we'll show to the people watching this online, and the board members here have a copy. Tonight's focus is just K-5, because we dealt in the last meeting with the increases at the middle and high school that we talked about a solution for. And moving through this to slide two, we see again what our guidelines are for kindergarten grades one and two, and grades three to five. And as I go through this tonight, we're just going to highlight the changes in red since the meeting two weeks ago. So looking at Booth Hill, the only significant change in Booth Hill is we have had some loss in grade three, and so when we are at a place where a loss or a gain of one or two students would make a difference in sectioning, we noted. And Booth Hill is now the school with the most influx. They've been on the cusp for kindergarten in grade one, perhaps tipping over to one more section, and grade three now potentially could go to one less section. And obviously, by the second meeting in August, we'd have the update, and you'd make a decision on that. You might ask, why, why would anybody be moving out at this point? There are some students whose parents are electing typical homeschooling under the current situation. Are, if they're concerned about sending their children back at all, opting for what's called temporary remote learning, which would be some forms of distance learning, five days a week. We probably are up to over one hundred students in that category, but we have had probably a dozen to twenty parents elect typical homeschooling. Homeschooling disenrolls the student from the district, which is why we see some drops in certain places that are a little bit later than normal. So if you turn to Daniel's Farm, there's one change I want to note here. Daniel's Farm grade three has solidified four sections. On the last presentation two weeks ago, we said about Daniel's Farm, it might drop back to three sections, but they're up to seventy-nine students now. I don't predict that that's going to go to seventy-five, so that would seem to be a very solid four sections at Daniel's Farm. Daniel's Farm is on the cusp below two grades. Grade two could trip over with two more students into another section. Grade four could go backwards into one less section. And again, two more weeks to work this all out. There are no changes to talk about in Frenchtown. Sometimes you'll see one or two more students at a given grade, but we only talk about it if it's on the cusp. So Frenchtown has nothing for this presentation to talk about. Jane Ryan, we added at the last board meeting, a fourth kindergarten section and a third grade three section, and those numbers are stable, so there's nothing else to talk about at Jane Ryan. There's nothing else to talk about at Middlebrook. None of these are in a position where we think they would go backward. I will just say, on Middlebrook, grade three, one hundred and one students for five sections. Somebody might say, well, why aren't you saying that's on the cusp? We know from our background with Middlebrook in particular, that we tend to get later enrollments at that school, based on some rentals that happened in late August. So I am very confident, as I stand here today, that that's a solid five sections that will happen. And then in Tashua, we have had nothing to report, because all of these are just squarely in the middle of where we would have for sectioning. So if you go to the next slide, that is our total summary. You can see our currently enrolled students, this is up to date today, our currently scheduled sections, and we currently have one hundred forty-two sections with one hundred forty-two K-5 teachers. If everything goes in one direction off the cusp, that one forty-two could go as low as one forty, or if it all went in the other direction, it could go as high as one forty-five. So typically, at your second August meeting, you will make final determinations on this. We'll have the latest data there, because we need to hire the teachers for the start of school. I have included the chart that some people like on the next page, and where it's in yellow, I hope that shows up on your screen, that represents the sections on the cusp that we just talked about. And the next slide shows you our year-to-year summary. So two weeks ago, we were off by a hundred and one kids K-5. Today, we're off by eighty-one year-to-year, but remember, that represents some people going to homeschooling. But last presentation, we had about fifty K-5 students in the enrollment process. Today, we have eighty. So I firmly expect we will meet and probably exceed last year's enrollment K-5 by the time we're here two weeks from now. And then our next slide shows our summary enrollment grade six to twelve. We are slightly down at Hillcrest, slightly more down at Madison due to an eighth grade that was large that moved up, and we are up in enrollment at the high school. So we're currently off seventy-six students from where we ended in June, but we have forty secondary students at the enrollment process. I fully expect this will meet or exceed our enrollment from June by the time we're here in late August. And that brings us to the last page, which is the total K-12 summary. And I do anticipate that we will be right on target for enrollment by the time we're here in two weeks. It's just important, I think, that the board understands this very well, but to represent that, in order for somebody to enroll, they must prove their child is school-aged, and they must prove residency, which is why some people stay in the enrollment process for a while, until we have proof of residence.
Jonathan?
Do you have a question, Jackie?
Yeah, Jonathan, I'm high school. At our next meeting, will you be able to give us a little idea about the high school, where we are at, and where they're going, or is it too soon?
Can you specify a little bit more? Are you looking for class size numbers at the high school, Jackie?
Yeah, or if, you know, at least some ideas on the class sizes, and how our AP classes are going, or things like that.
We, we can do that, and the counselors who are working in their summer days are contacting students who have some conflicts, and they're also working with every student who enrolls at the high school. We need every student in the right course, and in the right level of the course. And we currently, for example, have ten students who are enrolled, but we don't have any records on them from their prior district, sometimes their prior country. Those students are very hard. Those students are very hard to place in courses. But by the second August meeting, you're right, Jackie, we can give you that.
Just in, you know, in broad strokes, I know it's, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Uh, Madam Chairman?
Yes, yes, Mr. Ward.
A quick question. Will we have at the next meeting, uh, an outline or an idea what the six professional days will be like for our teachers? Uh, is it too early, the last board meeting? Is it too early to put that together, or?
No, I wouldn't say that will be too early at all. I would think that the board will have information on that as early as this weekend's update and a more detailed plan coming out after that. So yes, we will have a more full presentation then.
Well, thank you.
While I'm talking about that, to, again, Lynn Steinberg and Lucy Bongo, they've worked together. They've developed some good modules about health and safety. And it's important to just stress to the parents that if we're thinking that we can bring your children back in the hybrid model, it's because we think we can do so safely with social distancing. And that turnkey professional development on health and safety for every single staff member in the building is going to be essential.
Jonathan, just a question. I know we're going to be, having the Paris do three days. And one of them said that they're going to the high school. I don't remember how many seats we have in the high school. What is it, about seven hundred? I couldn't remember. I'm sure Lucinda knows how many.
Well, we. Seven hundred seats in the high school, Lucinda, in the auditorium.
Oh, and what it's wearing is eleven eighty-nine in the auditorium.
Okay. No, I just wanted to know, because that will give us space with all the Paris. That's all, you know.
Yes, several of those seats, every fourth seat and every third row is, uh, cordoned off for social distancing at this point. That's true at the high school and also at the Madison auditorium.
This is good to know, because parents ask.
Sure.
Yeah. Let me just add on something John said to Mike's question. You might get the professional development outline this weekend, then weekend report. And one of the reasons why Jonathan and Christine and the staff, maybe then, those two, we wanna get it out to the teachers, so they know, my memory is that the letters I'm trying to get, they know what to expect on each day.
Good.
Good.
Doing this year for the first time, and it's very important. We're doing it this year for the first time, a mandatory, uh, full-day session. The, uh, Monday, uh, I think it's the twenty-fifth, is the date for all our substitute teachers. We have about two hundred and fifty on the books in Trumbull. So it's very important to know that if your teach, if your student has a substitute teacher, a substitute paraprofessional, that person has received the mandatory health, safety, et cetera training.
Good job.
Any other questions?
No, good report.
Thank you. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Isagno.
No, no.
You're all set. Dr. Buck? Okay, this is good evening. No, I'm just asking, I have questions.
Oh, sorry, I have questions.
No, no, no. Okay. All right, everybody's okay? Okay, if you think of anything else that you want to, uh, ask, make sure you jot it down and let us know. And, uh, we'll get them, Mr. Isagno or Dr. Buck. Okay, Mr. Ward?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Okay, motion to adjourn, favor?
Don't move.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone, have a good evening.